Back to order please.
One seven three seven.
Seventeen, seventy, seventeen thirty-seven.
One fifty-three Bayside.
One fifty-three Bayside Road is, uh... Teacher.
Hi. This is, uh, Irina, Irina Matulik. Architect representative.
I'm all on the house, yep. So we, we heard you, uh, and we issued big changes. And to make the, make the neighbor. And what happened?
Okay, so we were asked to submit, uh, more information in more detail.
Yes.
For the board to be able to compare proposed designs of the existing house and also to the garage we brought to the variance last year. So I prepared, uh, two things. The first one is this, uh, table with a square footage comparing, uh, our table. And I also prepared, uh, floor plans where, um, I put a new proposal next to the garage in the same scale, uh, to compare directly. And also elevations where I superimposed the post over the garage. We got outline, and I will show you later. But compare both in the exact scale. So I tried to go into as much detail as possible.
Because I must, it was lacking all detail last time.
Yes, yes.
I hate that, I hate that garage that's still there. I know he can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just hate that. Something to do about that.
What's that?
The garage that you shared with your neighbor?
Yeah, I'm gonna, they said I'm over here. The neighbor happy with it. So you've got this kind of, you got, uh, some kind of fancy car on the side. So I put like some kind of garage door that just to move.
Oh, okay.
Make them to a real.
Yeah, yeah. What does the neighbor think?
Still have some issues with this.
If you stick that tip out, it's gonna say.
The original proposal that was approved for the, um, home originally, the garage was changed, and I don't see that showing here. We had agreed to two feet coming close off of our property line as well off the back. Plus, I think you guys had asked for two feet off the street. So I'm not seeing that in the proposed plan where it says it was approved back in June. I never did see a plan after that meeting though, when we had agreed to that. We still have a lot of concerns on the size of the house, but the size of the lot. Going up that third story for an office space plus two floors over that garage. The original proposal had a space over the garage which was going to be an office home leaving an exterior entrance. The woman was gonna work there at home. Being enabled, we tried to work with her and agree to that so that would be reasonable. She wanted to live there and, you know, she was trying to get it done right. The old garage that is still there is an eyesore. And if, I mean, if three parking spots, they would be, you know, that whole thing. If this goes up the way that it's looking, we've been paying for a water view for over a hundred years on our property, we will not have a water view, even from the second level of our house anymore.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the two feet, two feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, very glad.
We never would have approved that.
Yeah, so it's... Just one second.
I don't think it was ever.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Thirty-fourteen.
You have a confusion, we approved before.
I have, uh, here, coffee.
Twenty-two by twenty-four foot garage, two feet off the street.
Yeah. Is that on the lot? Yeah, but it's showing on the lot. Is it on the lot?
It's upstairs.
Why was it zero? Why wasn't it ever built?
Well, the owner purchased this property as is with the plans from the previous.
I bought it from the, uh, previous. Got approved with the garage, that's why I bought it for my parents to use in the land.
It has on it, she failed the conservation. And that's what I want to say about that.
I don't recall, um, the call company.
I don't either. I wouldn't need it.
So there's three garages on the property. The adjoining garage is confusing. They're willing to take the portion down, but the neighbor stores his car in there. The bridge comes down the middle, and it is difficult from that perspective. And they, they...
They're supposed to redo it.
Keep it two feet off the street.
Two feet off the street, two feet off.
Twenty-two feet by twenty-four foot garage.
You seem to have a different shift to break it off.
Yes, nothing, the thing's quite a different store upstairs.
Oh, yeah.
So...
So, so...
They want to go more, the garage should be more efficient. And they're going for finding because of the existing variance, yeah.
Okay. So what we did was, we... We approved these plans with qualifications that were written in, so it's not, uh, like it's two feet back. And then, uh, they sold the house, so we have a new guy now to do something. If it worked.
Making it bigger.
Making it bigger. Still what we originally approved.
I don't know about this con-con situation, but that's not a problem.
It's not a problem.
No, it ain't. I think you get a vote on it.
I don't think they have.
I have no more questions.
No more questions? You have a seat.
What you just?
Two feet. If they might have any comments they wanna make, pro con on this. Any additional, okay?
We, we recall the previous ones.
Yeah, we haven't heard, we heard what you said before, so.
Too much house and too little. Usus already building on the property.
Right, right, she's, okay.
Can I just say, uh, a few sentences?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, the existing house that's on the property now is a three-bedroom house, and it has a basement. It is non-conforming for a setback. So in order to build a new house there, if it would be as of right, we would have just five feet wide buildable area. So it's impossible to build a right regarding setbacks. So that's why we have to build, uh, existing footprint. Then since, in the meantime, FEMA regulations changed, uh, we cannot have a basement anymore because it's in a floodwater. So we are forced to have a bottom of the basement which is now on the crawl space at the same level as the exterior grade. And we cannot have a basement, we can only have a crawl space. So we went with the minimum possible crawl space of six feet in order for that space to have any use with exterior door at least for furniture or something. Then we went above with a minimum ceiling height of eight feet six inches. And then for the attic, uh, we went with a seven feet minimum height to allow that code. So, uh, and the goal was to create exactly what's there, about two thousand square feet house that has three bedrooms. But since we have to respect code now and FEMA, we had to increase the size. But we increased it just to the bare minimum to have the same function as the existing house. The garage, we made it smaller in order to provide better views to the owner, and we moved in by additional temperatures because we could. So the garage approved by variance, the variance is actually smaller. And the existing house size and function is as the original one, but needs to be more. So we looked really hard for any possible ways to create just the bare minimum of the house. The only way, place where we exceeded the height was about one foot with the ridge above the garage. But since that is behind the garage, um, and it's along the vision line and the other hand, they are not actually going to see it. So we, um, we think that we were, did our best efforts to make it as small as possible and to comply with it as possible. Garage itself, it doesn't have three floors, it has two floors in the attic above. It's not uninhabitable. It's, the attic is seven feet high, just a bit of three foot. So it's not a habitat space, it's just the attic only.
Well, couldn't you take that space out?
Well, there is no need to reduce the height of the garage. So it's, this meeting is about the main house, it's not about the garage. Garage is going through. Yeah, what they are asking is, uh, for the main house to be, or built. As it was similar to what's proposed in the drawings set with the variance for the garage. We couldn't build it the same way because FEMA changed.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we cut in the tree, she can't see anything, I mean, if I leave that tree, she can't see nothing from the ocean. She can't see the ocean, that tree is giant and big. So if I cut the tree, everybody's happy, this neighbor, I got support, the neighbor support me. I got a letter for all the neighbors.
We have all the others to support.
I can get more, I can get fifty-one, many as you want.
Will you have a neighbor's name?
I have two of them.
You can show the neighbor support if you want.
Did you, uh, have a meeting to make, uh?
Yes.
The ward council? Would you have any contact with the ward council, city council? If I want to do that, you always suggest that you do that first.
We went to, uh, dog, I went a couple of times to check FEMA regulations to make sure that we had the bare minimum. Went a couple of times to building department to check all the regulations.
No, we, we, we get that, but this area has its own board council for the city. Holds meetings so that everybody can discuss and hopefully resolve and make a recommendation as to what the neighborhood wants.
Well, neighborhood doesn't seem to have a problem, I guess.
He's the one to tell us that.
And, yeah, we have five signatures here with us.
All right, let's, let's go over it a little bit too. Thank you.
I think Mr. Dubin, the lot was very small, it's a very large sized lot. When they bought the property, they knew that they had two plans.
Yeah.
Can't control FEMA, FEMA's gonna be different tomorrow, just as different today, probably yesterday. So it's a moving target. And anybody that buys property that's associated with FEMA, uh, know that. It's their best buyer risk. So my feeling is that, uh, I'm not in favor of allowing the expansion.
I believe the property was purchased with the original approval.
Yes.
And this is secondary and is a lot, much larger than the original.
And it's a change of, of ideas because now they can have a basement, right?
Once again, you're right, that's a moving target.
Yes.
So, um, I, I, I think it's too large for the area, I think it's too large for the lot.
And of course, right, right now we have to deny it because one of us is supposed to. Denying. But I, but I'm in favor of denying it too. What's to make a motion?
In matter Z, let's see where we're going here.
Z seventeen thirty-seven. Uh, Mr. Chairman, in matter Z seventeen dash thirty-seven, Roman Zengi, for finding to demolish the existing home and reconstruct on the original footprint with vertical extensions and structural changes on the premises number one fifty-three, Bayside Road Quincy, I move to deny the request.
Now, before we do that though, you want to withdraw this, go down for this, and come back with a little plans?
Well, I don't know if we can.
We can only go back to one bedroom house.
I mean, it's already three bedroom, reducing to two bedroom, I guess, I'll leave it.
How much, how much lower, lower or smaller?
I, I don't know.
Can I, uh, can I propose?
What's that?
Can I propose a book, maybe easy change?
Why don't we do this? Let us, let us withdraw this, and you meet with this guy that we hit, Mr. Dubin, and see if you can work something out. And the neighbor too. Okay?
And the ward council.
And the ward council. So let's change that motion.
She doesn't understand.
Do you want to? I'm not saying, Mr. Dubin. Do you want? Do you want to continue this? Do you want to continue the case instead of having us vote now?
Yeah, let's do that. We're gonna be keeping it for a month.
You talk for, yeah.
And I can't afford a mortgage, I can't afford a, you know.
Then you might have to sell that house.
When I water, I want to, you know, approve the garage.
But you didn't have anything else.
I match all the neighbor, insisting with the neighbor.
I can deny it, you want.
Uh, I have a question. So, uh, if the main house needs to be lowered, does that mean the floor should be lower than the garage?
We can't, we can't answer, we only answer on stuff that's before us.
Right. That's why I said, we talked to Mr. Dubin, I'm gonna give you a month, okay? Give you a month, you talk to them, and come back.
Just deny it.
What day is that, two years?
June thirteen.
This is what it is.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, we draw that motion? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, um, in matters Z seventeen dash thirty-seven, Roman Zengi, for finding to demolish existing home and reconstruct on the original footprint with vertical extensions and structural changes on the premises number one fifty-three, Bayside Road Quincy, I move to, I think that case to June thirteen.
Second anyone?
Second.
Another seen, another favor? Talk to Mr. Dubin. We have to think back to make sure we have. Mr. Chair.
We have three more. I need, uh, Mr. Ray L, I need you in this case. Fox Street, who's here, Fox Street? Mr. Hemel, I guess, you have that?
Yeah, you want a more part?
Yeah, you, you have. Mr. Chin, you weren't here.
Oh, we're not, we're talking? No. Fox Street.
Name was this one. Brother on tonight's agenda. Ace Hemington, Z seventeen thirty-nine, Dan Hui Lee, great family to construct a rear addition, relocate the bedrooms on two twenty- clock. Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honorable members, it's a record. My name is Attorney Jack P. for Billmore, but now for the advocate. I have for the board this evening, my client's application for certain residential variances to twenty-two clock streets here in the city of Quincy. As I explained to the board last time, twenty-two clock street is a two-family residential structure. It's on a archway on the second floor, it's relative on the first floor. The, uh, property is somewhat unique in the fact that it doesn't have a dedicated living room and a dining room, neither the first floor nor the second floor.
Excuse me, counsel, I think we already had this case, correct? The only thing we talked about was.
Was the parking, that's correct.
Why don't you get to that?
We, we can get right to that.
There you go.
There was a discussion last time about the parking, and, um, there was a suggestion made, uh, from the chairman in regards to, um, expanding the parking so that we'd go from one lane to two lanes, which would give us, um, four cars instead of two on the street, which we've done. There's revised plan, um, indicating that, and, um, that's what we've done.
In reality, you can almost put sixty, correct? The length of that?
We eliminate the, um, existing garage difference, like the year of, of sixty.
You wanna do that? And do you have plenty of cars for everybody yet? Huh?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Are you, we need the garage, right?
Well, currently, your garage is not, not, you can tolerate two thirty-five cars.
Yeah, so why don't you get rid of the garage, put a shit out back somewhere and have plenty of parking.
That's fine, we'll, we'll take that, that's fine.
So I can motion, please?
This chairman, matter Z seventeen dash thirty-nine, Dan Hall Lee, for variance to construct a rear addition and relocate the two bedroom on premises number twenty-two clock street Quincy, I make a motion, uh, under condition that you're gonna take that rid of the garage, that's clogging the six. The granted areas. Second, please?
Second. The motion, CNN, all favor?
I told you.
Thank you, we all try to wait a second.
On the real business, new business. He says he's funny. How about all that stuff? Forty-eight street, Ralph, come here. Michelle, what do you want to do, name and address for the record? Okay, and you're here? Capacity? You have capacity here?
Are you the owner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you tell me what you want to do?
Yeah, my name is Juan, I'm here to help her to design the, uh...
Okay.
And we tried to add a second floor because our family is growing, and now, so more room. So basically, as a term, right now it's only two bedrooms, and pretty small and very narrow. So we can help her to do a second story, Juan to the design, and we're gonna make two bedrooms for, you know, as a culture, the, the, the new culture, we like to have a family live together as a unit. So, um, that's what she want.
Is this on the same footprint, just going up?
Yep, just on the, actually, yeah, on the force, because the force is really unsymmetric at the front. So she want to make it expand on the left side, even.
Yeah.
So as you can see on the front, front elevation view.
Yeah.
On page... A seven. Yep, so there the front post.
It is square, yeah.
Yeah, it's square down.
Yeah. I think you want to do that, fix the shot and put a second floor on there.
You have to make it symmetric and look as tightly.
Why is the roof so high?
Uh, the roof's so high because the pitch is eight twelve. Actually, yeah, the, the first floor ceiling height is only seven and a half feet. And we add the second story, which is eight feet.
Yeah.
And the roof pitch is eight twelve, I think is important because, uh, we don't wanna kill that aspect, we wanna do a little higher so to. But we are still wouldn't be allowed though.
I know, but it, it, it's just not, uh, just thinking here is. I mean, the roof that's on is probably five or six if that. Did you cut that roof down low?
I can reduce the roof pitch down to probably around two feet. We thought we'd use the pitch down six twelve.
Any questions, board? Anyone?
No.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call called. Can you tell me it's three bedrooms? Huh?
Actually, uh, the third floor has three bedrooms, the second floor is one bedroom. Because they plan to stay there for a long time, so it's better to have one bedroom on the first floor. When it gets old, you're gonna have to find another.
Say four bedrooms, you get two parking spaces?
Yeah. You got one. I mean, it's stack park.
Yeah, council got a lot of, uh, four bedrooms. They think it's three bedrooms, so. Four bedrooms and you get, you know, that, that regular parking. It's a problem to say, it's a problem to say people build there and have no parking when you get out of the street.
Why do you say it's two spot?
Huh?
How big's that lot, back to front?
Five thousand.
Thirty-one feet, thirty-two feet? Hundred feet?
Fifty feet across.
Now, they got a hundred feet there to the garage. Is that two spots?
Yeah.
I mean, it's stacked. Oh, stacked park.
Four bedrooms with stacked parking. Do you know what I mean? You just, that's, that's my question, that's my question. That's up ahead, is there any, uh, anyone wanna speak on a folks, I mean, a folks that were, uh, on the side?
I have a comment, I'm just your son, but...
Why don't you stand up?
Um, my name's.
Name and address for the record, please, I'm see.
David Meehan, fourteen J Street, same address, I'm your son. In terms of the parking, we asked him how much parking there is. The garage, like, um, you mentioned, it's pretty deep, we can fit four cars. mentioned, it's pretty deep, we can fit four cars.
And it's stacked parking, no one does. Four bedrooms, they just don't do it. They park on the street.
So, you need the parking lot?
It's just, it's just, you're building big, big houses, and it's stacked parking, and what you're doing, you're putting street cars all over the street. You pull in first, no one pulls behind you, because they know you want to get out of there. That was everywhere.
But when that's ten hundred feet, we actually have only cars in that house, then?
It just don't happen.
Well, you may not have.
May not have that house next year, you don't know.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Sell the house.
Yeah, we have to think about.
Anyone opposed on the side of first call? Second call? Third call closed. It's just too big. Four bedrooms, stacked parking. And they sell them, they keep them in the house, buy cars or. It's just a lot's too small, nicely killed. We're not in favor of this proposal, but you guys have your vote.
Well, if my father did his neighbor, and on the street, well, I think it's fair to, a lot. They were maybe three bedrooms.
Is anyone who can come back with the three bedrooms and reduce the pitch down to another two feet?
Yes, probably.
It was another chance to.
Come back with a set of plans in four weeks? Give you a week or two to get a set of plans. Motion for four weeks, please, June fifteenth.
This is Chairman, number seven, Z seventeen forty, try to move the way I could be mine, with a, with a variance to construct a second floor addition on premises number fourteen J Street Quincy, make a motion to extend the hearing to June thirteenth.
Second?
Second.
Any motion, see in that, all in favor?
I oppose.
Why don't you meet Mr. Duka during the week, stop and see him, okay?
Okay.
Thanks. Brother on the new business, case number Z seventeen forty-one, Danny Manes, five hundred Adam. Counselor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I always do, I apologize for subjecting the board to two flummies in the same evening. My brother shaved his head, so I think that kind of helped. I do represent the Yavvah KHS, KHS management. With me this evening are the two managers, Keith Patel and Bar Farc, our senior. Also with me this evening are, is a representative, Melissa Faridi from Enterprise Rent A Car. The property is, is five hundred Adam Street, I'm sure you all know it, it's the corner of Furnacebrook Parkway and Adam Street, fronts on both, both ways. The property is currently used as a four-pump, two-bay gasoline service station. It's located on a lot that's kind of triangle-shaped, it's a little over fourteen thousand two hundred square feet, located in the Business B zoning district. It's currently improved by approximately thirteen hundred square foot non-conforming single-story building, again, with office space and two garage bays there. Also on the site is a, is a canopy, a little over seventeen feet high, which houses where the pumps are. Again, this, this property is located in the Business B zoning district. It's important for me to note and point out to the board that what we're proposing here is a change of use, you know, from its current use as the gas station to an Enterprise Rent A Car. Enterprise currently is located at two seventy-nine Willow Street, also in West Quincy. It's a rather small site, not perfect or conducive to, to their use, they've been there for many years, have made it work, but have been looking for a more viable site, you know, for that particular business. Important for the board to understand that, you know, Business B, this particular proposed use, the Enterprise Rent A Car, is allowed. It is allowed. Because this is a non-conforming building, we are seeking a finding this evening, you know, and as the board knows, it's a finding, you know, finding that this proposed use, the Enterprise Rent A Car, is not going to be substantially more detrimental. So, in its deliberations, you know, the board will consider, you know, the traffic, you know, what impact that would have. It's important for me to kind of point out to the board, the current use, you know, Steve Giulio is the current proprietor of that business, Steve's been there for over twenty years, I've known Steve for many years, he's kind of shared a lot with me over the years on this particular business. At his peak, he was pumping ninety thousand gallons a month, you know, at this particular station. You know, think about that in as far as number of vehicles in and out of that site every day, every week, every month. You know, you're looking at, you know, potentially four thousand vehicles a month, you know, what is that interpreted to each and every day? He, and compared to this particular use, Enterprise, if you, you may understand the business, the our rental car business, certainly, the, the traffic, you know, the vehicles that comes in and out of this particular site is going to be substantially less. You know, a lot of these cars are delivered to auto shops and things of that nature to pick up clientele. It will be substantially less. We did, we had a neighborhood meeting with the assistance of Councillor Brian Calamucci last month, we probably had twenty to twenty-five people at the Sterling Middle School, met primarily with pretty, pretty good reception. I think that whole stretch of Adam Street, you know, has, has gone through a little bit, we, this, there was a matter before this board fairly recently with a proposed drive-through for it not to go, so I'm sure you all remember, you know. Our office represented, done the donations in that matter as well, I attended those hearings, you know, I saw the concern of the neighbors in that particular area off of Adam Street, and the concerns of this board as well, you know. These are the things that I've conveyed to my clients right off of that, our first meeting, you know, that's the concern down there, you know, when they were looking at different uses for this, this particular site at Adam Street, you know. Enterprise, you know, they end up speaking with, I felt, knowing Enterprise, you know, with that particular use and what the traffic would be in and out of that site, I thought this site would be very conducive. And again, met pretty well with, with the neighbors, there's always that concern down there, but I think they primarily agree that this would be certainly a lot better use at that particular site than what's there today. I went into, you know, the, some of the specifics with respect to the gas station, the number of gallons and things of that nature. In addition to that, over the years, supplementing revenue, you know, Steve was, Steve Giulio was selling cars from that site, he was renting cars as well through National Car Rental. Many more cars than what we show on these particular plans will be on the site. Understand, this particular business, we show twenty-five vehicles on the site, however, in order for this business to really work, you know, this fleet, you know, has to be on the road, and these cars have to be rented, you know. It's difficult to put a real average of how many vehicles will be on this site, but you know, you might be looking at, you know, fifteen on average at this particular site, and not really what's shown there. The canopy will be staying as well, that's proposed, you know, primarily for, for the drop-off and pickup of these vehicles, so it's kind of sheltered. One of the bays of the two will be closed for additional office space, you know, for personnel. The other will be cleaning, you know, for cleaning cars, both washing as well as interior cleaning. There are drains and water, oil separators on site now, which is going to be really worth well for Enterprise in that one bay, so there's no concern with, you know, drainage from the site. So, I think everything stems a lot from this hearing, you know, obviously, the tanks are going to be removed at some point. The property is on agreement right now with my clients. So, again, I do have an Enterprise from, a representative from Enterprise here this evening with me, if you have any more specific questions that we can answer, or she may be able to answer for you as well.
What about the lighting plan, counsel?
So, again, lighting will be, they're going to use, they're going to keep the existing canopy, there will be signage around the canopy. Enterprise, I believe that's illuminated, there's a freestanding sign on some grassy area that they will use, that is illuminated as well. I received a call the other day from an budding Jason neighbor across Furnacebrook Parkway, owned a couple, four units, that, those two brick-and-power buildings, you know, I did speak with her. Two questions that she had for me, one was, who plans on maintaining that area where the sign and the flag holes are? Enterprise, four of my clients will be maintaining that area, you know, as well, and that's part of the landscaping that will, that will be done. Her second area of concern was that illuminated light that the chairman brought up. Enterprise, their practice now is when they close at six o'clock, that will stay on for a couple hours at most, and then turn off at night. So, that will be shut, that will be shut off at the evening. With the building itself, there'll be, again, I mentioned, you know, additional office space enclosing one of the bays, and certainly, you know, painting the building and providing additional signage on the building.
How much extra signage do you have, square footage, that you should have? I mean, it's like signs all over this place, signs and signs, it's kind of.
Yeah, I think it'll be less than what's there today.
I don't care what's there today, we're building something new, and what's going to be put there is one, two, three, four, five, six, I think.
Yeah, there is, there is a rendering, and we can show that.
Yeah, it seems like bizarre. Here's, here's what I'd like to see, you're going to get, what square footage are allowed and nothing more? I'm going to have Mr. Duka deal with that if he gets it, so if he don't, you don't have to worry about it, so that's good for me. Mr. Duka? Signage, you take care of the square footage of signage that they need only, that they're allowed?
A lot of this is existing today, so we're not, we're not going to create any more than is existing today.
We can take it down.
Sure.
We can take down some of those signs, but they're not going to be there, maybe we don't need all that signage, I don't think I need a sign on the business as a whole team, that's something that I'm going to ask to be put in there, the business is closed, all your lights are off. People know where, if they want to rent a car, they go to Enterprise and five places show up, it's, I think the five-year-olds do that, so you don't have to advertise all night.
Certainly a well-traveled group, you know, and I think it is, it certainly is, you know, advertising for Enterprise, you know, during those hours of volume, but people are coming home from.
I watch six to seven on the day on TV, I think I got enough answers.
Certainly a successful business.
There you go.
Yeah, certainly successful, so.
Any questions for the counsel?
Well, I was just, I just have a comment, I agree with the chair that perhaps the freestanding sign, I know it's there now, if that could go, and you could have the canopy on perhaps for a couple hours, if you see that as.
Brighter. Might be even brighter.
That's why I.
Yeah, so I mean, a lot of, that signage, again, you know, was not, the illuminated signage is not going to be on all that, all that long, you know.
Is there anything else, any questions, Michael Bryan?
I have, the, the number of cars that can be put there, is that controlled by the licensing board? Or is it based on the size of the site?
Mr. Duka?
I think so. This board can impose any conditions that they want, but they also, the license board would also regulate that.
So, you would determine how many sites, how many cars are allowed to be there?
Yeah, the gasoline storage, yes, that'll be determined by the license board as well.
But there's no gas would be there?
This guy's going to be removed? I'm sorry?
Are the tanks going to be removed?
The tanks will have to be removed, they're discontinuing the operations of the gas station, so those will be, will be removed, yeah, absolutely.
Are you proposing to change your hours of operation, days of operation?
Enterprise Rent A Car?
The hours would be Monday through Friday, eight to six, and Saturdays, nine to noon.
Close on Sunday?
Close, start to close on Sunday, yes.
So, that would be less than the gas station operating?
Absolutely.
Nine to noon on Saturday, correct.
Is there a restriction?
Just right now?
Yeah, is there a restriction now to the number of cars that are allowed on the lot, do you know?
I don't believe there's any restriction now, my understanding that's, it's.
That we know.
You know, it's really not fuel storage, I mean, everything is outside. Requested here was, you know, after speaking with Mr. Duka, is a variance, just for the initial cars parked along the outskirts, you know, there's a, you know, the ordinance is a ten-foot setback. Understand, as you see in the existing layouts, and compared to the proposed, that's always existed, you know, vehicles were always parked there. However, I did request a variance with respect to that. With respect to vehicles parked stacked behind it, the parking regulations don't apply to those vehicles because they're the actual product of, of the business, so those can be stacked parking as, as we show it on the layout.
Any vehicle sales?
Not at this.
Just three fronts.
Okay. And, and then, the decision to keep the canopy was then?
I think certainly reviewed by Enterprise personnel, and they thought that would be, that would work. I believe they did a similar leasing in, down in Cape Cod, similar gas station where they continue to use the canopy. Bad sense, you know, certainly for the pickup and drop-off.
Does it, does it matter with operation?
It's beneficial for our customers to keep it alive, and our employees to keep it alive, I mean, my mother, we just rebought one and found one as well, but we kept it in the canopy, and it's great for customer service.
Just wondering if it had a business use.
Yes.
Counselor, do you have a landscape plan anywhere for what you're going to put in there?
Where the, the freestanding sign is?
No, even around, you're going to change anything, you're going to put some miles around, box wells, anything?
Any, any landscape area which is minimal, which is, I think, primarily along the Furnacebrook Parkway part of it, those two beds will certainly be cleaned up. Absolutely.
Do you want to put like boxes near the entrance?
Yeah, I mean, Enterprise is, I mean, they've been around for a long time, they're, they're a very professional organization, they're young professionals, and, you know, converting it from gas station to their particular business, certainly those improvements will be made, probably right away. But, you know, certainly after neighbors kind of express some concern, or, you know, some interest in improving the section along, confronted along Furnacebrook Parkway, you know, those were areas that, you know, were already in the minds of my clients, there's really improved.
Fencing, you going to put any fencing up at all?
There's no fencing proposed, the rear of this particular property is adjacent to the parking lot of TD Bank.
Right.
Which already has.
Yeah, there's, I think there's some vegetation along, along the bed.
People could walk right into that collar.
From?
Anyway. The way it is now, there's no fencing going on.
There's no fencing, there's no fencing.
Right. So, I'm. License.
There's certainly curbing and things of that nature, you know.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone, please come forward, name and address.
Chairman, members of the board, for the record, we're on Yakovuchi, four thirty Yavvah Street. My family and I resided there for the past twenty years, I can see the property from my living room window. I'm here to support it, obviously, I attended the public hearing, and notwithstanding some of the concerns you've expressed relative to the signage, there really weren't any concerns, major concerns expressed by the neighbors, and any questions that were addressed were, is that I believe satisfactory by the Enterprise folks. I would hope that you would support this change of use, and I think clearly, clearly, it is extent preventable use of anything that I can imagine that could go there, it's not going to have an impact that we see today relative to, to, to traffic and so forth, and I think it would be an approval to, to the neighborhood, and I believe they'd be a good neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak in favor?
My name is Mary Moore, I wrote the letter that you should have received in your packages, and I'm the person that the attorney referred to, having called him, right, and spoken to him, just to clarify, what I had asked him about was not who was going to maintain the corner as much as could that be an opportunity, or could this be an opportunity to improve the corner, and do more extensive landscaping than what they're talking about? In fact, privacy-type shrubs or something in keeping with the sort of Furnacebrook street area there would be really nice. We do support this in principle, we'd just like to see that corner improve greatly through nice land. We'd just like to see that corner improve greatly through nice landscaping, higher bushes, trees, and that sort of thing. Otherwise, we've addressed all our questions and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor?
I'm going to speak. I don't know whether I'm in favor or against, I'm like...
Well, you can speak next.
Well, I'm not going to say I'm against it, but the one thing I know, Drummerville, six to Grandwall Road. There's no curb, there's a giant curb, you know, there's no curb in front of that place. So they almost should put up a curb so people can't get out that whole space. I'm thinking of maybe like cars pulling out anywhere on Adams Street right there. The length, you know, of someone to be able to get out, it's like a giant driveway meant for the, for the street. I mean, I actually go by there all the time. I never get gas there. It's not a popular gas station, so I can see it being less used for enterprise. So for being less traffic, good, but it's about when the cars come in there, they can go anywhere on Adams Street there. So I'm not sure whose requirement is to put a curb in there, but it seems like there should be a normal space. That's way too much space to allow them to have. And I'm not sure if I like that big mutual sign still being there. I mean, that's a lot of signage. I think having it conforming to match the TD Bank right next door, but they got the signing, would make sense, you know? But I'm not against that being an enterprise car rental. I mean, we need car rentals, I think, so I want to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Last call? I'm going to try to hear if you're thinking of... One more in favor? I'm in support of an enterprise rental car five hundred Adams Street.
Thank you. I got it from the side.
Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call? I have a letter here that I won't read because it's really disgusting, but turns my stomach. Guy's name is Scott Shaw. He's not in favor, he's opposed. If I was someone in this audience, I'd probably try to get the... Get to read that somehow. I'm going to request, bizarre, he's opposed. Someone to talk like that even though he's beyond me. Second call, third call, all that stuff. Part of the hearing closed. Freedom of information, I could give you that. Bizarre.
Just let me post it, okay?
Isn't like the problem. Signage is a big thing. I'd like the sign shut off when they close. Any lighting, shut down. When the business is closed. Business open, they got their lighting. I want any signage on that building that they're not allowed by rights per square foot. And with that, I'd be approved of the business.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too, Mr. Chairman. I think this is going to be a much cleaner operation and the neighbors' liking is, it's not the like.
Right, it's got to be quieter and cleaner, gas station operation. The landscaping would be, I'd like to see that put across.
Landscaping plan, cool, buddy, Mr. Duka?
Whether you would be the one?
Landscaping plan with bushes in any place that's plantable.
In the area of the flagpoles and where the benches and stuff are, okay?
Well, he could talk to Mr. Duka about that.
Right.
Up here.
No, yeah, I just...
On the illumination, they just have one thing, one concern for the board, it would be to consider.
You mind if I, counsel?
Favor, if those are the issues.
I think the, uh, the one thing in terms of the bushes and shrubbery, it, it looks like there's going to be some stacked parking, like all those cars lined up on the Furnacebrook side, so, you know, I definitely think that side would be, you know, is the more important area where you're having all the additional parking for some, just shrubbery that hides them a little bit, you know?
Along the front?
Yeah, along like that, that side of Furnacebrook, where you can see where their parking plan is, yeah.
I have one question.
Yep.
Please talk about it.
No, Bliss had just mentioned to me, at times, there are people that drop off vehicles after hours. So some, some illumination on-site is important, at least for a couple hours.
Till eight o'clock?
Till eight o'clock?
Yeah, I'm fine at eight.
Okay.
I just, you know, ten to eleven each, like...
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Illumination, four o'clock. Do you want shrubs along?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think, like you said, just like to keep in character, there's some, there's residential homes right across the street there.
Both foot?
Both foot, first, because most of the cars...
Both foot shrubs? Both foot shrubs.
And you can see?
Are we all set?
All set? Any motion here?
Mr. Chairman, Madison, Matt, Z seventeen dash forty-one. I've been up to forty-four more.
Oh, wah, wah, wah. I got a dime on my shoulder.
That's true, I'm sorry. KHS Management LLC, where variance by any change to using the existing structure from gasoline and two-bay service station to an enterprise rental car premise number five hundred Adams Street. Make the motion to grant the variance under the following condition that the lights get turned off at eight o'clock and then we have some landscaping to get fully four-foot, bushy, hard paths.
Or the Furnacebrook Parkway.
Clean up the corner. Second?
Second.
Any motion standing, all in favor? Oppose?
Thank you so much. Thank you.